Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of Trustees Chairs Panel. We have our guest with us this afternoon. I'm Brian Greenwald, a professor of history. I'm also the co-chair of DPN 25, 25th anniversary for the events the rest of this semester. It's my honor to introduce our panelists with us this afternoon. We have Dr. Philip Brovan. He's a graduate of Gallaudet in '66. And he served on the Board of Trustees as Chair. He joined the Board in 1986 and served on the Board. Was Chair from 1988 to 1994. Dr. Brovan, for years actually worked for IBM. And currently works for ZDRS as Vice President of Business Development and Outreach. Welcome, Dr. Brovan. The next Board of Trustees Chair, former Chair is Dr. Glenn Anderson. Dr. Anderson is professor and graduate of Gallaudet University in 1968. And with a psychology degree and a minor in sociology. He went for his PhD and earned that PhD from NYU in Realty Retative Counseling with a minor in Counseling Education. And Dr. Anderson has worked years at the University of Arkansas in various positions. He's very involved with Arkansas's deaf community. Has been involved with the National Black Deaf Advocacy as well. He was Vice President or Vice Chair of the National Council of Disabilities. And Dr. Anderson joined the Board of Trustees in 1989 and became Chair in 1994 and continued that position until 2005. Welcome, Dr. Anderson. Okay, now we have Pamela Young Holmes. She graduated in '74 from Gallaudet College as an English major. She has a Masters in Deaf Education from the University of Tennessee, Knoxville. She worked as a teacher for years. She's currently very involved with technology access. And since 1987, she's been Director of Consumer Regulatory Affairs for Old Tech. And Director of Customer Service for CapTel. She was nominated in 1994 by President Clinton to the US Access Board. She also was nominated by President Obama to serve on the National Council of Disabilities. She served on the Gallaudet Board of Trustees from 2002 to 2007. Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you here. Now, I have the honor of turning it over to Dr. Alan Hurwitz, President of Gallaudet University, who's going to moderate our distinguished panel. It's really an honor to be able to moderate this distinguished panel of former Board of Trustees Chairs. I'm delighted to really just jump into the first question. What is the first thing that comes to mind when someone mentions DPN today, if they were to mention that today? What's the first thing that comes to mind? Dr. Brovan?
Well, it was a civil rights movement for deaf people. Simply said, that. And any movement oftentimes will transform a community. What happened before and have after the event dramatically is different and changed as a result of the event. So it was a movement that we recognize now, 25 years later, as we look back, we can see the impact and the transformational changes it's had on deaf community members since that. So I would label that as a civil rights movement.
People say, "Well, Gallaudet didn't have a deaf president before 1988." That they couldn't even imagine that, that they finally, that's what they say, is finally. It's about time.
To me, DPN is the change of the status quo. Changing from what existed at one time to something that's much better.
That's great, thank you. Now, let's go back to 1988. What are your first thoughts about people talking about DPN and that movement? What first comes to mind or what came to mind first during that time?
Oh, boy, I think you've asked the wrong person about this because I was in the middle of absolutely everything back then. I was Chair of the Search Committee. And in addition to that, I guess it was, I became Chair of the Board after DPN. So your question in terms of which time are you referring to about during DPN, perhaps I can elaborate a little bit more.
How did you feel being in the middle of everything? While the Board was trying to make a very difficult decision, but at the same time, the community was pushing for their needs. So what were your initial thoughts, when you're faced with two different approaches?
Well, that's fairly easy for me to talk about. I had been on the Board and I honestly had no concept that Dr. Lee was going to be resigning. There was no discussion, no inkling that that would happen. And then all of a sudden, Dr. Lee called me in one day and said he was resigning from his position. This was in August. And it was just about that same time that Jane Spillman asked me to Chair the Search Committee. So that was my initial involvement. And fast forward a while to March of the following year, a number of things happened during that time. I was also serving as the NAD Board member during that period of time. NAD, of course, was pushing for a deaf president. And here I am, sitting as Chair of the Search Committee at the same time. So it seemed as though every time I was in a Board meeting, I'd be asked to leave the room. They kicked me right out because the NAD was busy discussing their stance on this matter. So a number of things were happening that I was very much involved in. First, I'm a member of the deaf community, but yet I had to remain neutral as Chair of the Search Committee. So, you know, I guess to say in terms of DPN, I live and breathe and really will carry it to my death, that experience. I mean, from A to Z, you name it, I was involved. And then, of course, afterwards assumed as the responsibility of Chair of the Board of Trustees and we moved forward from that point.
Now, before DPN occurred, the idea of a deaf president probably was not in the forefront of people's minds, as you can imagine. And then Phil was appointed to Chair of the Search Committee. And later than contacted and received the names of qualified deaf individuals for, in order to develop that list of individuals. Later, that pool went to deaf individuals and they were, they did not appoint the deaf person. So I can understand why people were upset. All of those hints, all of the hints that we thought were helpful, we then expected a deaf president to be elected.
Well, you know, for me, I was kind of outside to that way, you might say. I was in Madison, Wisconsin at the time. And I was watching it as an alumna at the university. And I was completely stunned by the events and, of course, captivated by what was happening. I was in support of the movement and I knew that it was going to be bringing big change. And as I sit here today, I can recognize that. I mean, think back, you know, we didn't have 24/7 relay service back then. We didn't have caption television that was available to us. We didn't have access to the global society, the global government. We didn't have access to any of those things that we have now. So DPN was the catalyst for all of these events that made everything we have today a reality.
That's true. It's interesting you get the different perspectives. Now that you were the Chair of the Board at the time, Dr. Brovan, what are the impacts of DPN? And what were the impacts on your role as the Chair? And how did that influence on what you did in your position?
Well, I can speak a bit to what happened before that. It's an interesting way. Many events prepared me to be Chairman of the Board. You know, being Chairman of the Search Committee and sitting through all of the interviews of a number of different semifinalists who had been interviewed in the process, and I think we had a number of about 20 applicants. Then we interviewed the semifinalists and raised a number of questions of them and gathered information in terms of how they would benefit the university. So all of this was basically free information that prepared me very well for my position. My being offered the chairmanship of the Board was completely unexpected. I didn't know that that would happen until Jane Spillman ended up resigning. And that was the Sunday, March 13th. And with her resignation, the Board of Trustees voted and asked me to become Chair. This was completely something I hadn't considered. There had been no discussion, no thought that it might actually happen. And all of a sudden, I was offered this position. And at that point, I had to take a moment and consider what I was walking into. The Board felt defeated. And how was I going to situate myself as fair, as Chair of this Board, knowing that this had happened? All four of the student demands had been achieved. So with this defeatist position that the Board was in, how was I going to, you know, provide support to Dr. Jordan as the new president, but at the same time, address the issues of the Board? Helping them come to an understanding that this was a good move and to move forward with them from that point. I had expected several resignations from the Board as a result of everything that happened that week. So it was a significant challenge, undering that 51% of the Board was now going to have to be deaf. And we had to weather that change and all of those challenges.
And how long were you the Chair of the Board?
'88 to '94. '93, '94 is when I stepped down from that position. I was asked to step down as the Chair by my Board at the National Captioning Institute when I accepted the position as CEO of that organization. I was asked then to recuse myself as Chair of the Board. And I was happy to pass that on to Glenn Anderson.
So it was a five or six-year span as Board Chair, right? And what way did DPN then affect your work or help you with your work?
Well, you know, I think King actually spoke to this issue last week. My challenge was that I could not fail because I had to prove that the deaf world was capable of serving in this position. And it was very important to that, that having worked at IPM, I was given the full support and the authority to move forward in this capacity. I came to Washington City a couple of times a week during those first few months. And, you know, every time King went for congressional hearings, I was there providing support and being with him by his side. You know, King had been selected without any preparation, as had I. Neither of us were well-prepared for the positions we were in. So we worked quickly to get up to speed. But we really capitalized on this offer because it became a momentum, if you will. Everything was moving along so positive with so many great strides and so many successes. We built all those successes and continued forward with them. So I feel very good about my tenure there as I look back. I'm writing a book now, actually, about DPN. And in this process, I think we're going to be revealing, as I have, a lot of new information about some of the changes.
Oh, I look forward, I want, like a book with your signature on it, actually.
You got it, you got it.
After five or six years, then, Dr. Anderson, you became Chair for, what, the next 12 years, is that correct?
11 years.
Okay. Could you talk more about how DPN affected your work or helped you in some ways? What were the challenges or the obstacles that you faced over those 11 years?
Sure, I can speak to a little bit about what happened before DPN. I mean, just to give you a sense, to think that I would have the opportunity someday to serve my alma mater in this capacity as a Board Member was absolutely unthinkable. It wasn't even something I would have considered. And then, along comes DPN. Phil and King both approached me at some point in time, asked to meet with me and proposed to me the idea that I would become a member of the Board of Trustees. And I thought it was a wonderful opportunity to serve my alma mater in this capacity. So I joined the Board at that point in time. And I never expected that Phil was going to be resigned as Chair of the Board when he did. Again, that was a bit of a shock for me. So the reality of, you know, my role, assuming the chairmanship of that Board was something that I had never imagined. I had no training on how to become a Board Chair. There are no classes, no training that's offered to individuals who are about to serve in this capacity. So Phil served as my mentor. We had opportunities to sit down and talk together. And in terms of how it affected my work, well, as Board Chair, anyone who's served in that capacity knows, it's a 24/7 job. You know, I worked at the University of Arkansas and I basically still was viewed as a Board Chair even in my position at the University of Arkansas. There are very high expectations placed on this position. And so I felt an enormous responsibility. So serving as Chair, as I did for 11 years, it was indeed an enormous responsibility, but one that I thoroughly enjoyed.
Excellent. Now, what were there challenges that you faced?
Oh, challenges, absolutely, there were challenges. It was in about 2000 that the murders happened here on campus.
That's right.
There were two murders that occurred here on campus and it was a very difficult time. The campus was going through a very difficult time. A number of members of our campus were hurting. And the Office of Communications here on campus did a wonderful job of setting up a crisis management team. And the President's Office and the Crisis Management Team and the Office of Communication all came together, keeping the media informed and working with Board Members. Of course, we had a behind-the-scenes role of providing support for what was happening here. And Gallaudet was able to provide resources to the faculty and the staff and students so that they could receive counseling and support services as needed.
Great, thanks. Pam? And to follow up with Dr. Anderson, you followed after him?
No, actually, there was another person after him and before me.
Okay, so tell me, how did you become Board Chair? And how long did you serve in that capacity? And in what ways did DPN help you in that position or support you?
Well, my appointment to be Chair was in somewhat different circumstances than others have spoken to. The protest of 2006 had just ended on campus. And the Board asked the candidate to end her contract. So my responsibility became then to select the new president to conduct the search, conduct the new, the search process, and very quickly bring on the new Board or the new President. So as you might say, it was pretty hot in the kitchen, but we did that very successfully. Dr. DeVilla was brought into the position. And he fixed what needed to be attended to. He addressed really basically what was happening on this campus. And also the concerns that we had with the re-accreditation that was so very important for this school to be able to continue. It was important that we continue to be recognized as a university and have these credentials from the accrediting Board.
Do you feel like DPN helped you do your work as a Chair?
Well, DPN provided many opportunities for me to go out and help write rules and regulations that would regulate, you know, the Americans with disabilities. And the legislation then, of course, as we know, that followed the selection of the deaf president, DPN. So we can look to what happened here and very positively see how it led to the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is a wonderful thing for us, and allowed new standards in the requirements here for Americans who are deaf. So my experience was a little bit different from others.
I just wanted to add something else. You mentioned something similar to what I said, but I just want to clarify about training to become Chair. And to that idea, I think it was about seven or eight months after DPN, King Jordan was President. And I went to a workshop actually on, at the National Association of Governing Boards, AGB. And they had a workshop in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And that workshop is where Board Chairs and Presidents would go together from various colleges and universities to attend this conference. And they all looked to, of course, everyone knew about Gallaudet and were very familiar with Gallaudet. And they said, you know, "How are you doing? People are asking if you're doing okay." And they were saying that it's rare that a Board Chair and the President start at the same time. It's either one or another. The President would continue and then you get a new Board Chair, or vice versa. And the Board Chair would continue if another President left and that there was some continuity. But in this case, there wasn't any continuity. And I'm sure Pam experienced that too. Dr. Anderson had a different experience, but you're absolutely right. It is a 24/7 job. And as the President reports to the Board, that's very important too, because that's important to remember.
If you don't mind, I did want to, you know, you were asking about how DPN affected my work, and I can think of one clear example. It relates to leadership within the deaf community in Arkansas. You know, back in 1987, I approached the state legislator to see if we could get improvements for deaf people in Arkansas. And I was unsuccessful in those efforts. Nothing came of them. And the following years, of course, as we all know, DPN occurred. And it was just a few months after DPN. Harry Florson, the CEO, Harry Olson, the CEO of NAD, came to Arkansas and talked about everything that had happened with DPN and really instilled this inspiration in all of us who heard him. So with that inspiration, I went back to the legislation. And considering what had happened DPN and wanting to carry that on, was able to be successful in passing two bills. One related to relay services and the other related to the equipment distribution program. So that shows the direct impact that DPN had on my work in Little Rock.
If I could add, the 51% of the Board Member, composition of the Board Member is important to remember. After DPN, more and more organizations and Schools for the Deaf had the 51% requirement as well. So we saw that DPN support those efforts broadly.
You know, Phil, you just mentioned that you and King Jordan had the opportunity to go to the National Association of Governing Boards, AGB. And you received training. I'm wondering if the other of you had that experience as well?
Yes, I did as well. Yes, I had the same experience.
I know, I've done the same thing myself. I've attended the conference with Ben Sukup. Oh, and I did want to mention, I'm very sad to report that Ben was unable to be with us this afternoon, but he and I have attended those meetings and found them to be wonderful opportunities. We've been able to share commonalities that we may share with other Boards and Presidents. And then we meet separately as a group of Presidents and then the Chairs meet on their own and we come together and meet together again. But it's interesting to find so much commonality when we come together, so many things we share.
One thing that I think is important to realize, if you live and breathe today, of course, you can look back at DPN. You may not realize that we have, all the things that we have now, all the access and all the transformation in career opportunities happened because of DPN. I don't think things would be the same. It's like if you're watching the movie Back to the Future, you really kind of envision it very different. And so I think DPN had a significant impact on how things have turned out now.
So we've kind of been going in order and I'd like to mix it up a little bit here by asking this next question. What did DPN have in terms of the impact felt here at Gallaudet University? Can any of you speak to that?
Well, it changed Gallaudet forever. Gallaudet will never be the same. That's for sure. The idea of what deaf people can do has been established. It's set. And that thought of, the notion of you can't is no longer even a thought. It's not prevalent any longer. And deaf people in leadership roles, and will never go back to the way it was. I mean, Gallaudet's changed forever because of DPN.
So perhaps if you could elaborate a bit more, can you give us some specific examples in terms of how Gallaudet is different if we consider pre-DPN and post-DPN era? I know you've talked about the fact that, I mean, certainly, we can recognize now that deaf people have opportunities to do whatever they want to do, become whatever they want to be. But what is the actual direct impact that Gallaudet has experienced as a result of DPN?
I'll use a Board as an example. The balance of power changed. Previous to that hearing, people ran the Board and that then was flip-flopped after that. DPN movement, we hired interpreters, we used to hire interpreters for hearing deaf people, but now we've hired interpreters for the hearing Board Members. And deaf members of the Board now are serving in Chair positions and committees. So the balance of power has changed drastically. So now, when those vacancies are available, people look to a deaf individual to apply. It's automatic now that a deaf person apply. And so the views of deaf individuals in leadership roles has changed drastically.
You know, I hope that for faculty and staff and students, that, that this mission that we challenged, the level of education that we provide to students, be one that continues to prevail. You know, deaf people can go out in the world and do whatever it is they want. They can be wherever they want to be. And so I think that that was a change for Gallaudet, just that whole sense.
Couple of things. DPN raised the bar for deaf people.
Oh, agreed.
It used to be at one point, but it actually raised the bar to a certain level. And maybe even if we have a deaf President, United States President, that would be wonderful, but it raised the bar even higher. We no longer just accept subordinate positions. So that was a significant impact to Gallaudet. The endowment previous to DPN was less than $10 million. And then after DPN occurred and within that 10-year period, it increased to $150 million. So Gallaudet actually can breathe a little bit easier. I mean, there was never enough money, but could at least breathe a little bit better. It was in a better financial place. And it had, it could do a lot more with the money and the support that it had.
So we've talked a bit about the impact that has been realized here at the university, but what about the impact DPN has had on programs and services throughout the United States, even around the world? What has been the impact and what ways do you see DPN making changes?
I can remember Senator Harkin recently said that in 125 years, there was real no progress with legislation and improvements for deaf individuals' lives and changing requirements for accessibility. But after DPN occurred, that there was tremendous movement with captioning and everyone has built-in captions in their TV now. A lot of universities now are competing with Gallaudet for our deaf and hard-of-hearing students because they provide access. There's a lot of competition for our students. So everything, in a sense, again, I think DPN was transformational. The deaf president now occurred and certain movements occurred. However, DPN was, provided a new beginning. It's a deaf progress now. And we've progressed quite a, quite a long way, but there's still a lot that can be done. So I would suggest that deaf progress now, keep moving. And Gallaudet loves acronyms, of course, and we should have Raising the Bar, RTB.
You know, Tim Rares quoted a few years ago in the DPN anniversary video, that DPN was a revolution that quickly transformed the lives of people. And it was really just the beginning of the hard work ahead. People outside of Gallaudet, of course, for a while, right after DPN, we saw changes happening in Schools for the Deaf and superintendents, of course, you know, were more, were deaf. And of course, now we're seeing a decline in the number of Schools for the Deaf. But we can see the impact that this has had. And as I said, DPN impacted Gallaudet forever and likewise, has had a lasting impact on our nation. And I really believe there is so much work left to do. We cannot sit back and wait. There's still so much more to be done.
Well, it's interesting, something interesting happened. I'm glad you mentioned that, Dr. Anderson. With DPN, DPN created a short-term or a transitional vacuum, so to speak, in the deaf leadership arena. Deaf leadership was in a way that people, you know, slowly were promoted and moved up the ladder in their office or organization. However, when DPN occurred, there was a quick movement. People felt like they should hire deaf individuals and move those into this deaf individual. People felt like they should hire deaf individuals and move those, deaf individuals into those positions. So then there was a loss in that certain level of deaf middle manager positions. So there's no middle managers left, and that's, like Glenn said, there was a reduction for a while, a decline, but we're thinking those young deaf individuals have moved up, and there's opportunity. So we kind of got back into the groove of things. So that was something that I noticed. There was a transitional situation that occurred because of DPN, and I think that, you know, then be more individuals in those positions because of DPN.
Very interesting perspective. Next question here, and any of you can start with your response to this one. If you were a professor of history, how would you define DPN? How would you explain it to your students? Because if you think about it, most students these days weren't even born when DPN occurred. So what would you teach, and what would you think would be most significant for them to know? Anyone?
I do teach undergrad students right now at the University of Arkansas at Little Rock. I tell the students that DPN was the most successful college age or college movement, college-led, student-led movement that ever occurred. And they actually got the board to meet all of the four demands. They closed down the university, and no other group of individuals have ever done that before and ever did what Gallaudet students did. And that really changed and revolutionized our thinking. So that's what I would teach, and that's what I teach.
I guess I would teach the students that DPN was a point in time in history where at that time, people, meaning students, faculty, staff, alumni, advocates, hearing senators and congressmen and neighbors, everyone came together. And the power of the force that they created together changed the status quo. You know, the status quo was basically, you know, the way it is today is the way it is going to be. And, you know, deaf people were the ones to say, what are you all thinking, you know? And even some deaf people weren't on board with DPN. But it became then an idea where people came together and said, yes, we can do this. Yes, deaf people can do it. And it was seven days. It completely changed the world.
Yesterday, I was walking on campus, and it's, I rarely have a night free to do that, but I really wanted to engage in the campus. I'm not here often, so I wanted to see what the campus looked like again, so I took a walk because I miss Gallaudet, and I walked into an old boardroom. And I actually ran into a couple of students, and I asked students about DPN. And student, really, the students' reactions were blank. They just stared at me with a blank face. And it's not to the fault of themselves, but it's the deaf community. If you look at the black community or Jewish community, they always are reminding people of what they did. They reminded students. And it seems like we have forgotten to remind the students what DPN was all about. So we talk about the Holocaust, Jewish people talk about the Holocaust every Friday at the synagogue. We discuss Holocaust issues. The black community has Martin Luther King Day to recognize those events, and we have constant reminders. And we used to have Gallaudet Day, and we used to have Gallaudet Awareness Week, and it seems like those programs are no longer in existence. So we have to be responsible as a community to raise the awareness and bring that back to our students so that they're familiar with this and know what happened, and then they can really relate to DPN.
You know, I believe this is what Professor Brian Greenwald is attempting to do, being that this is his idea, to have a celebration, a program that will happen this semester, but when it's over, that these notions will be incorporated within the curriculum for future students. So let's go back to this idea of you all being a professor of history, and you've got a group of students gathered, and you're talking to them about DPN. What kind of homework assignments do you believe you would give these students so that they would learn more about DPN? What are the critical areas that you would encourage them to study?
Read Phil's book.
No, no. Well, it's not published yet.
Well, to prepare for this panel, I went to Gallaudet's website. There's a wonderful page there that provides a lot of history on DPN. I don't know. What else?
Well, to add to that, and I can help a little bit here maybe. As I'm preparing to write my book, I've been gathering, you know, historical facts about Gallaudet, and I came across a fairly small brown book that was written by the former chair of the board, Albert Atwood. And I was kind of thumbing through the pages of that book and found it to be a wealth of information. I mean, it seems like nothing from the outside, but it's filled with fascinating facts. I got partially through it, but it seems like 1964. It went up to 1964, and then nothing was written after that. So there's no further documentation as to that type that occurred after that date of 1964. So, you know, I guess I would give it to the subject, to someone whose subject matter is history, like Dr. Greenwald, and ask them to continue that historical chronological timeframe so that we get the rest of the story, which is what happened after 1964. I would want students to really feel that history is relevant. You know, history is important to students. It's important to all of us. You know, Amos Kendall actually was a very wealthy gentleman, and he gave some monies for this land, and also, he was receiving funds from the Telegram, from the Morris Foundation, Samuel Morris Foundation, who actually had a telegraph company, and they ran a telegraph line right through Kendall Green's grounds right here. And so ran those first telegraph lines, and those first signals were sent across our campus right here. So as we learn little bits and pieces of our history, it really instills within us a sense of pride.
One thing I'd like all of the history teachers to be sure to teach is that DPN is not necessarily all about a protest. And instead, it was a protest, and things were made happen, but instead, it should be a lesson in that you can bring change if you agree with something that needs change. In that you won't support the status quo, and that gathering a mass of people in seven minutes, seven days, seven weeks, you know, seven months, seven hours. You know, the Gallaudet students changed the world in seven days. At lunch today, I had a seven-minute idea. In seven minutes, I came up with an idea that this is the 25th anniversary of DPN that we should recognize that it is history and give support to the university. So I came up with the idea of having a fundraiser that, well, to ask everyone who was affected by DPN all over America to donate an amount of money that's related to the number 25. It could be $25. It could be $250 or $2,500. So I came up with that plan today. So I'm going to give you my first 25 number donation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would encourage everyone at the university to do the same thing.
Where is Dr. Murray? Where is Dr. Lynn Murray? She must be thrilled with this idea.
Oh, she's over there.
Thank you.
She's over on the right. That seven-minute idea was, oh, I just want to tell you though, that seven-minute idea example was not a protest, of course. It was just something, it was a seven-minute discussion of an idea, and it just so happened that at the next table over was development office people. And within that seven minutes, I came up with that idea, so I wanted to share it with you.
Thank you so much. So, Dr. Hurwitz, you asked about, you know, what assignment I would give students if I were their teacher. You know, we don't have a lot of resources, and if you think about, well, Phil's book certainly will add to that source of knowledge, but we don't have a lot of resources. And I'm looking forward to Brian's curriculum as well. And I'd like to see a video where people could actually express an American Sign Language and share their experience and their perspectives on this period of time, because I think, you know, this is the kind of assignment that students could really benefit from.
This is being streamed live through video, and last week's presentation was too. I think that's wonderful. People can build an interest, and then people would develop things based on that interest. And Pam's absolutely right. It's seven days. The DPN happened in seven days. It's very rare that it would have that type of impact. Movements take decades or years, but this happened in seven days, so I found that very interesting. And after, the Monday after DPN occurred, I was waiting to be interviewed by three different TV stations that would come to campus, and they wanted to interview me as a board chair. And I couldn't interview everyone at the same time, so we decided to do one by one, and I had the interpreter there. And did that interview, and then we moved on to the next station. And while we were waiting, it was actually cold out. We were waiting in the TV truck. And we were sitting down, talking with the TV crew, and just having light conversation. They were asking about things. And I said to the TV crew, I said, what do you think about the protests? They said it was a very unusual protest, and I asked why. And they said the protesters won. That was their answer. So, which is very rare.
You know, that's interesting you say that, because I think both you, Glenn, and Phil have talked about the media. I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit more about the role that media has played, and, you know, what's your experience in dealing with the media? And what kind of support did you receive? What kind of interaction did you have with the media?
I think Phil probably had more interaction with the media than I did.
Well, with the media, you know, fortunately, having worked for IBM prior to DPN, I had been able to, I studied at a community college for a year. IBM had sent me to media training there. And I'd been in a week-long training, and we talked about how to deal with the media, how to, you know, make sure you get your points across. And the number one rule was to keep your answers short and simple. So, you know, today, I guess I'm not following that rule by not giving short, simple answers, but nonetheless, I had that training. And sure enough, when you deal with the media after DPN, as we did, they expected you to perform, and we hired a PR firm to assist us with that. And I felt that I was capable of handling myself without the advice of a firm. But I recognize as well, there's a cultural difference in terms of the way deaf people and hearing people interact with the media. So if you come up in front of just a slew load of microphones as a deaf person, that's certainly not going to be conducive to the way I communicate, right? So it was a cultural shift for them as well as for myself, because I don't need the microphones in my face. I mean, it took some time to get things together, but it was very important that, you know, they had to get, the media had to get their stories closed quick. They have a lot of power in what they present. And so the media came very quickly. They had press conferences. When King said that deaf people can do anything except here. So at the end of that press conference, that was it. The press conference closed, and we were ready then to move on to the next media experience. So, you know, media can be something that can happen in a very short amount of time, but ends up showing up everywhere. People Magazine, on the television stations. So, you know, media can make or break Gallaudet. And one thing that I find very interesting is after the protest, the media joined in our celebration with the students. And that is not neutral reporting, but it happened.
Did either of you want to respond?
I really didn't have any experience with the media in my tenure.
I had some experience, but I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna refrain from commenting.
Right. It's very difficult to deal with the media. We have had some very good experiences with the media over the last couple of, three years, and, you know, I could say lots of stories about that. But we also have wonderful media support here on campus, and I'm sure you as well receive support from the Gallaudet University Media Department.
There was a lot of interest, though.
So my next question, I believe you may have already answered, but I would like to see if there's anything further you would like to say about the relationship between DPN and the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA. I know, Pam, you've already talked a bit about that. I didn't know if others would like to add anything further.
Well, Tom Harkins said the ADA would never have happened without DPN. And DPN really made this happen. Other disability groups really have, the deaf community, to thank for the ADA.
And Brian, I think that should be part of your history coursework for students to come to that realization, because oftentimes, people don't see the connection between DPN and the ADA passage. Glenn?
The National Council on Disabilities is an organization I served on from 2001 to 2005, and we had a 15-year anniversary at that time. And the former President Bush attended this ceremony, and the Chair of NCD, Locke's Freedom, told us that he developed the basic concept for ADA in 1986. And on a yearly basis, they had to do an annual report to the President in Congress, of course, and they had a basic structure in place. However, there wasn't enough support to pass this bill just yet. But he did mention DPN as a catalyst to get Congress to support for the ADA.
You know, I wanted to mention, it's not just the ADA. There are a number of other things that happened as a result. You've mentioned the Telecommunication Captioning Circuitry Act, and then later, there was the 1996 Telecommunications Act that required captioning. So a number of other bits of legislation are direct results of DPN.
Great. My next question is for any of the panelists, and now that we're celebrating 25 years. And over the 25 years, how has DPN influenced your work throughout the years?
Well, I was a teacher the first year. And then I joined Ultra Tech when it was a very small company, just providing TTYs to deaf and hard-of-hearing people and family and friends of deaf and hard-of-hearing people. But after the passage of the ADA, the TTY requirements were everywhere, right? Police stations had to have TTYs, as does hospitals and hotels and workplaces. So it completely changed what I was doing, and it really changed for everyone, in fact. I think the youth of today and the Gallaudet students don't have any clue what it was like to live in a time when we didn't have those sorts of things, because now we have everything, and all of these are direct consequences of DPN and the changes. But, yeah, in terms of what I was working, you know, I got my presidential appointment to, you know, serve on the Access Board, and then with the National Council on Disability. I didn't know, Glenn, you were also serving on that board previously. But it gave me opportunities in a number of other areas to influence change and really to see society as a different place for deaf people. So it was a very powerful experience.
And that was the work that you did for those 25 years, right?
Absolutely.
For example, the local deaf community in Little Rock, in terms of getting legislation support, support for specific bills for the communication and equipment distribution, was addressed. And then later, NCD worked with 15 disability leaders within an opportunity to reform disability policy. Jeff Rosen worked for NCD at the time, and Bob DeBilla also served on NCD. And so we had an opportunity to influence disability policy in general, not only for deaf individuals or deafness-related issues.
I'm also very proud that Jeff Rosen was recently announced by the White House to become the Chair of that council, so that's quite a distinguished position.
That's right. I think now he's running for Executive Director for NCD as well. So I would encourage you, anyone out here maybe interested in applying for that position, to do so?
For me personally, I worked at IBM back at that time, and I ended up retiring from IBM in 1992, and then after IBM, went on to become the CEO of the National Captioning Institute. Without DPN, I would have never become CEO. That would have never happened. So I served in that capacity, and then DPN created ADA, which then created more legislation to provide access to deaf people. And then came video relay service, and now I'm working in a video relay service where, again, with the direct result, if we can trace that right back to ADA. If it hadn't been for ADA, none of these things would have happened. So I progressed along in my career as many as you have as a result of the implications of ADA. All of it can be traced back to ADA. If it hadn't been for ADA and DPN, I don't think we would have been where we are today.
And right now, in my daily work, I oversee the department of 40 people, and I never dreamed that I would do that. I was teaching in a classroom. Now I supervise individuals. I hire individuals, fire individuals, and I supervise 40 people. So had that not happened, I would never have this opportunity.
That's great. I know we're short on time, but I did have one last question that I wanted to ask. You know, we have a lot of students who are participating in this panel today, and I'd like to see if you can share from like to see if you can share from your life experience, perhaps one lesson that you've learned as a result of DPN. And what advice would you give to future leaders?
He said, the best answer is the shortest one, right? My answer would be raise the bar. Yep, let's go and raise the bar, do things together, and do it without protests, and do it as a team.
Well, students need to get knowledge and tools in order to be able to successfully complete their studies here, and then give back to Gallaudet after graduation. What you take from this university, find a way to give back. Bring your knowledge and your tools then to the deaf community and serve them well. To me, that would be another important message that I think we can learn from DPN.
Well, first, I would tell students to be grateful for what you have.
I agree with that.
They have interpreters, they have communication tools, they do have a lot. And use them well and appropriately, and that, they will go a long way.
Well, those are certainly good words of advice for our students. I want to thank all of you for just making the time as you did to be with us today, to share with us your experience about DPN, and how it has had a significant impact on people in so many different ways, impacting not just the university, but impacting people outside of the university and around the world. The impact that it will have on future opportunities for young and deaf, hard-of-hearing people are yet to be realized. But we certainly have learned a lot of ideas and information that we can share with our future students. So I want to thank you again, and also I want to thank Professor Brian Greenwald. He's the one who made all of this happen today, so thanks to everyone.